Go for it.
I'm gonna call the meeting to order for February first for the working session. Terry? Statement of public notice. Sorry. Push your button.
Hereby provided our written notice of and the agenda of the public meeting as stated below. There's an opportunity for public comment as noted on the agenda upon recognition by the presiding officer.
And everyone, Lori and I are present in the room. Justin is on the Zoom meeting. Chris is out of town and Matt had a conflict and was not able to be here tonight. So we will take a motion to adopt the agenda. Can you please turn your microphone on? I'm sorry to keep telling you.
Move to adopt the agenda with one amendment.
And what is that?
I would like the amendment to be that to also discuss the site location. Paperwork that I brought with me.
I would leave that under other details. I'm not comfortable adding that to it. So your motion is to adopt the agenda? I'll second it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Justin?
Yep, I'm fine. Bye.
That carried and we will stand for the pledging allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So in the drive is a new plans, I shouldn't say a new, it's a plan set but with much fleshed out on it. So I guess I'd first like to start with Bruce and he can explain what he has here and what changes he's made since we talked a week ago or two weeks ago.
All right, I added, the third page G 003 adds the building code review. As I was going through this, after our last meeting a couple of weeks ago, realized that the building is small enough that it doesn't require a fire sprinkler system.
Did you catch up, Justin? We do not need fire suppression.
Okay, how close are we on that?
Quite a bit below it. The, basically the deciding factor is the size of the town hall space. If that were more than 5,000 square feet, we would need to provide fire protection. But we're basically at about 3174 net, which is how that's figured. And so we've got, we've got room to grow and still not push us to the point of requiring fire protection.
I also checked with our building inspector Todd Dolan on this building too. And he stated absolutely not, we do not need fire suppression water sprinklers in it. He said, I would just have the board be aware that you may want to make sure that you have enough fire extinguishers in this building in certain spots. And I did convey that to Bruce.
Yep.
That 3174 doesn't include the two bathrooms, right?
No.
Correct.
It's just the space.
It's just the A3 area.
Okay, go ahead.
And I've got on the floor plan A101, I am showing a fire extinguisher cabinet between the doors coming in from the vestibule and the storage room. I also have a fire extinguisher cabinet in the south wall of the kitchen. I've got a fire extinguisher cabinet in the east wall of the office, by Terry's office. And then I've got a, just a wall mounted fire extinguisher in the mechanical electrical room. And I've also got a wall mounted fire extinguisher in the IT room.
Perfect. And then where was the one in the big room, in the meeting room?
It's, it's just south of the doors coming in from the vestibule.
Oh, there it is. Okay. Any questions?
Just to ask this question. Excuse me. We're comfortable with that, right? We're comfortable with not moving forward with the fire extinguisher system, right?
I am.
I'm just, I'm, I'm asking because I'm not.
And I am too.
Familiar, I'm not, I'm not familiar with the not having one if we're only count, if we're not counting the office space. That's I think where I'm, my brain is like, I don't understand why that one would be considered an exemption.
What, what's the determination for the word comfortable not?
Well, first of all, he has to answer his question.
The, the current code only requires assembly occupancies to have fire protection. The current code does not require business occupancies based on the 2015 international building code, which is what the state of Wisconsin has currently adopted. So, and, and like you said, in the assembly occupancies, the smallest a room can be and be required to be to have fire protection is 5,000 square feet on a single story building. When you get to multi stories, then it goes up to 12,000, but it's, it's, it's spread over several floors. So again, we're, we're designing the building and detailing the building to be as safe as possible. So the, you know, the, the sheet rock separating the interior space from the attic is all going to be five eight inch fire rated sheet rock. It'll provide a one hour fire separation from the the conditioned space to the attic. We're also doing attic draft stops. Because the building is more than 3,000 square feet, we have to provide attic draft stops to reduce any one attic space to less than 3,000 square feet. And that also is done with five eight inch sheet, fire rated sheet rock, both sides of the truss with a one hour fire rated access panel to be able to move through and be able to access the entire attic. So there will be one draft stop that will be just east of the west wall of the town hall space because the town hall is more than 3,000 square feet. And the other attic draft stop will be on the truss that's closest to the wall that separates the office from the hallway.
So that's what you have on here in A301 is showing these draft stops. So in your plan, in your plan set, Justin, it will be in there where these draft stops are going to go both directions?
Yep. So the first, the section at the top on sheet A301 shows where the two draft stops are.
And you told us ahead, you told us two times previously that we were going to have these things in here, these draft stops.
Yep, that's, that's a code requirement, irregardless of whether the building is sprinkled or not.
So actually, we have a double draft stop before it gets to the clerk's office. Based on how this looks.
Right. So you got, so the office, the office has one attic space. The center portion of the building has another attic space and then the majority of the town hall has the, the third attic space. And like I said, each of those will have an access panel that's one hour fire rated to allow you to get, move through the attic and be able to have full access through the attic.
That's, that's a clear explanation of those two pages.
So then she asked a question about.
He answered it.
Oh, did you? Okay. I just want to make sure.
So then on the floor plan, the one thing that's been added, talked with Teresa, we've added a couple of floor boxes in the storage rooms that will have power only. Just because the concern is if you've got a whole bunch of stuff parked in there up against the wall, providing wall outlets doesn't really do you any good.
Well, that was, I had that question in another area. I don't remember where.
So, so we'll, we'll have two floor boxes in the storage room. They'll only have power. We're not going to bring data in there because there's no reason to, to pull data into the storage room.
We don't have any cameras going into storage, right?
Right.
Okay. So we don't have to have like a camera watching or?
No.
Voting machines, right?
No, as long as they're under lock and key and you'll have cameras in the hallways in the hallway and also in the meeting room side. So you can watch if someone goes in there.
Okay. I just don't want to have the, I think that someone could come in through the ceiling conversation.
Well, Bruce can talk to that if you wanted to.
Certainly try.
That's going to be good for those two drafts.
Well, you know, the, the the bottom of the roof trusses are 12 feet off the floor.
Take it from someone who fell 18 feet off a roof. Trust, it's not a landing. You want to stick.
Right. So, and, and, and the, the plan is we'll have one attic access panel through the sheet rock at the bottom corner of the trusses and that's going to be pretty much almost right out from the IT room door. Going up through the ceiling because I basically want access to the attic at the middle of the building. So you've got the most hidden.
Sure.
So as you're, as you're crawling up through the hatch.
Going through the trusses.
You've got, you've got as much room and, and that's going to be pretty much where the access doors will be through the draft stops is pretty much going to be right in the middle of the roof.
Those aren't like drop down stair things. They're like just a hatch that.
Yep, it's just a 20, 24 by 30 hatch. That's again, the, the, the access panel on the ceiling is also going to be a one hour fire rated.
Yep.
And that'll just be, you'll drop that down and have a extension ladder to go up through the, through the roof to get into the attic.
Just to, just to ask this question here is the, is the hatch going to come into the, come in from the IT room or is it going to come in through the storage closet?
The, the hatch will be actually in the town hall space.
Okay. I didn't know if we wanted to put the hatch behind something that's, excuse me, considered lock and key, or if we want to just say a 12 foot reach is too much for the 13 foot ladder or whatever people complain about today.
Well, and, and you'll actually have to remove ceiling tile in the town hall space to get up to the access panel.
So you won't see it?
Yeah. So, yeah, well, the other thing, yeah, the other thing I was thinking is the, if we ever had to drop another line into that IT room, you'll have to go in through the access panel and then walk into over the top of the IT room, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah. And I don't, I don't think that'll be a big deal. I figured having the access panel out in the town hall space is, you know, I, I guess we could certainly put it in the storage room.
I don't know if anyone feels any one way or the other about it. I, I was just asking because I didn't know if it had, if it was preferred to have it someplace that's you have to have the key or the badge to get into, or if it's just here it is.
Well, they're keyed, they're keyed. So someone in the town hall will have to give them a key to get to that hatch.
Right. So the, the access hatch up through to get into the attic will have a key. But, you know, we could certainly put it in the storage room where you don't have to take ceiling tile out. And it would be under lock and key. Where then you could do the access panel that would just have a, a knurled latch. Because it would be in the storage room.
But I don't know. I, I look at it this way. It's above the ceiling tile. So no one's going to know it's there.
Correct.
I mean, a common person coming into that town hall will not know that that access panel is up there.
Correct.
So to me, that's half the battle.
Yeah.
And, and, and the plan would be to provide a sticker, probably a blue sticker on the ceiling grid at the tile that needs to be removed to get up to the access panel, just so everybody knows.
Actually, I've, I've got a silly idea for you.
Okay.
Okay. So you've got those really cool lights you're putting in here?
Yep.
Couldn't you have, because those, don't those lights have the ability to change? I thought one of them, if I was reading the packet right, you could request a color. Then you could just request the color for where's the access panel. There you go.
That'd be a weird light on the ceiling.
No one else is laughing. Okay. No one likes.
That's right.
Lori and I are both smiling.
Bruce is laughing and the rest of us are looking at Bruce.
That's right. Like I'm, like I'm smoking something.
I know.
We should all be smoking some.
So, well, go ahead, just, go ahead, Justin.
No, the only question I was going to ask is, so the way that we have this laid out, the design was that if the town hall space ever needs to be increased, right?
Yep.
We would be pushing out on that, oh goodness, where's my?
East side.
Yeah. Where those bathrooms are, right?
Yeah.
That's correct.
Where the outdoor bathrooms are. So I guess my question is if, if we're not required to put in any sprinkler system until we hit over 5,000 square feet in that town hall space. So
Right.
What would that, that would push that wall out? What is that? Why, I can't do math anymore.
You'd be pushing that wall out
25.
Over 40 feet.
40 feet.
To gain, to get another 2,000 square feet.
Yeah. And that's after you plowed over the pavilion.
Hold on. That, why is that not making sense to me? The building is, the building is 40, the building is 43 feet deep, right?
The, well, yeah, the building is a rough number, 60 feet. But I, I guess I, you know, you, you could move the restrooms to the east when you expand.
Yeah.
Or you could just expand out and leave the bathrooms where they're at.
Yep.
And only, and only make the town hall space 40 feet.
And have a bump back to those bathrooms. You know, you have the ability on this plan to expand this building east, west, or even a little bit south. So you do have some flexibility on this.
So.
So the only thing I was going to ask is if we make sure that we don't put ourselves in the, oh yeah, well, because we didn't need it then. If it ever comes back to us, now we have to go rip the roof off. We have to go tear the building down to fix it. I'm just, the one thing I was thinking is going back to that sprinkler configuration. If it would be possible, if during, you know, when I'm long dead, so in the next 40 years, that some other poor soul looking at this could look at it and go, oh, hey, they set it up. So the building, if it's expanded, could in theory be retrofitted with a sprinkler. That's what I was trying to get at.
And that's fine. We can sure put that together.
I don't think we need that, no.
No, but he can, he can put some verbiage together on it.
The one thing that we could do would be to drill a bigger well. You know, instead of doing a four inch, do a six inch well. And so in the future, if you needed to get more water capacity, the well, the well size is there, you just replace the pump.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm more thinking of the roof access. So if someone came through here and 10, let's say the town sees a huge, huge explosion of people. And I'm, I'm just saying this hypothetically and we actually pushed this wall out. If someone came in and said, or the code changes and we did a modification, it now requires us to meet code. That someone comes in and says, oh, you have to decapitate the entire roof of this building to retrofit it for water versus we're not changing any major designs to now accommodate that we don't have a sprinkler system. I, that's where I was more coming with that, that question.
Yep.
Yeah.
And, and we will make sure, right. And we will make sure that the roof trusses are designed to accommodate the dead load of a fire protection system.
Yeah, yeah. Well, because you're, you're going to want that dead load anyway if we go solar. So either way, we're going to be in better hands that way.
Right. The, and the, that part of the dead load goes on to the top cord. The dead load for the sprinkler system goes on to the bottom cord.
Oh, that's right. Cause I'm, I'm thinking, I'm thinking vaulted ceilings. I apologize.
Yep. So not a problem. We'll, we'll, we'll make sure that that's included in the specifications for the roof trust design.
Thank you.
Bruce, I have just one odd question. What's the bump out here? What I call a bump out area right beside the IT room and the conference room? Look in your storage and you've got that little bump out right here. What's this? Little what?
Well, that's, that's just because, that's just because of the size of the IT room.
Yeah.
And they wanted to make sure we had a small IT room.
Right. And we're using that for storage. We're putting probably the file cabinets of the DS 200.
Trying to maximize the amount of storage space. So.
We need every inch we can get.
Right. And that, and that should have enough room, you know, it's 11 and a half feet. There'd be plenty of room there for storing racks of chairs or tables.
Yeah, I don't really care. I just think it seems like an odd space. And you know, I keep looking at that galley kitchen or that runway kitchen and it's just not beautiful at all. And.
Well, we have some plans in here to look at when we get there. I want to talk about these two outdoor restrooms that Chris Marshall expressed his concern about. And would you like to speak to, are you want me to, or you want to do that, Bruce? Does, because the two outdoor restrooms have block walls on two sides of both of them, correct? Or is it three sides? You can speak.
Two sides. So the, the, the wall between the two outdoor restrooms and the town hall space will be six inch concrete block that'll go from four slab to bottom quarter truss, 12 feet high. Current plan is eight foot jipboard ceiling in both bathrooms. And the walls that are not concrete block will be FRP panels on fire rated plywood. Just because that's going to be a whole lot more difficult for somebody to punch their fist through than just doing sheet rock or ceramic tile on sheet rock, which they can come in and, and bust up. So the plan is to do the walls that are not block with FRP on half inch plywood. And then we're going to do a epoxy floor coating. That's a trowel applied. It's about a quarter of an inch buildup and that actually has an integral four inch high base. That's all part of the floor coating system. So it wraps right up, wraps right up the wall, four inches high. Makes for a floor that's extremely durable and easy to clean.
So I did run that by Chris before tonight's meeting. And he was in agreement with that. You call it RFP?
Yep, the FRP panels.
FRP, I'm sorry, FRP.
Piverglass reinforced panel.
Yeah.
Right.
He was in agreement with that. He said, that is pretty much indestructible.
Right. Yep.
And with coating those floors, he said, that's a great idea.
Right.
Cause he was okay with concrete, but he said, this is better.
And we're doing same thing on the, the two walls at the mop sink and the mechanical electrical room. Four foot wide, six foot high FRP panels on the walls at the mop sink. Just again, because no matter how careful you are, at the mop sink, you're going to have some splashing occurring and the FRP is.
Are you going to do it on both walls around there? It just?
Yep. Yeah. So it'll go, it'll basically go to the corner where it says FE. So that north wall will have that, that whole thing will get FRP. And then on the east wall, it'll come down four feet.
Only four?
Yep.
So in that mop sink.
The mop sink is two by two.
Oh, I know how big that was.
Yep. So it extends a couple of feet.
And the mop sink was already on the plan. I just missed it when we were talking last week.
It's been there right along. So. He was on it.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else? Did we put in those for the bathrooms? Did we put those switch, the emergency flow switch? Whatever it was that Chris was talking about or?
Yep. I gave those to Bruce and he's going to include them in the, in the plumbing specs.
So my mechanical plumbing engineer will get those taken care of. We may need to make the restrooms slightly bigger. We may need to actually do a double wall between the bathrooms to accommodate those switches and the valves.
Yeah.
Because the valves will need to have an access panel to be able to get to them. And we want them inside the walls. So right now I've got two by six wall. We, we may need to expand that to basically doing two, two by four walls to, to be able to get an access panel. But as soon as my mechanical engineer gets, gets to that point and gets that.
On our, our bathrooms, before we get away from the bathrooms, is there a code on whether those doors have to swing in or out? Because they're going to be if they're right now, you've got them in swinging. If they were out swinging, they couldn't kick them in. And I didn't know if.
Yeah, there is, basically it's a single use restroom. So you need to provide a five foot diameter circle clear area.
No, I'm just talking about the door. No, I'm talking about the door.
Door swing.
Right. But.
Can we pull out doors? So once you're in there, you can close the door without having to. I'm just wondering if those doors should be opposite swing is what, of what they are. Outswinging city in swings. It's just a question I'm putting forth.
And they can swing in either direction.
Well, this is the time.
I was thinking that the conversation, I think Chris Marshall had, had mentioned it last time was the outswinging is concerned with something with the wind.
Yep.
The inswing was something you could shove shut.
Yeah.
But I, I also agree with, with what Lori's saying is you, you in theory can kick them in.
Correct.
Although I don't know what steel frame they're putting in though.
They're putting, they're still, talk about the steel doors.
The, all of the exterior hollow metal doors will have a 14 gauge frame and 16 gauge doors. And they will be reinforced at the hinges and at the lock.
Then we, then we definitely want to have, that's the case, Bruce. We definitely want to have the swings hammered down before you order them. Because there's going to be no, there's not going to be a do over if they come in and they're, they're not right.
Correct. Yep. And I, I can certainly change them to swing out. Not a problem. And, and you're right. Door swinging out are less likely.
They're not, they're not going to blow. You can't, you can't kick them in.
Right. You can't kick them in. They will have closers to close them, to keep them closed. And it, you know, fortunately it's on the east side of the building, which is the lee side of prevailing winds are coming out of the northwest. So I don't think it's going to be an issue if the doors swing out that they're going to be caught by the wind.
Well, then you open the door, you, every, all the area you're walking into is clear. There's no obstruction.
Yep. I'll swing them out.
Do we need to do?
Wait, 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 wait. I just have, I just have a question about this though. If there's swing outs and that's our exit door for elections, that poses an issue for me on that sidewalk.
You, you still have three feet to get past, which is code requirement.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're not picking people off.
Right.
Do you see what I'm saying?
Oh, because if someone opens the door from the bathroom and smacks them in the face from them exiting the voting area.
And if they're in a wheelchair, they need more than three feet of width. So that I question whether we should really have them as an exterior, as an open out without increasing the size of the sidewalk. I just am a little uncomfortable with that because I look at that and say, I'm in a wheelchair and I'm coming out that door and I gotta go down that sidewalk and someone opens up a door and slams me right in the face.
Right.
Well, if you want on, on February 8th meeting, I can bring my wheelchair in from when I took my 18 foot dive off the roof and we can test it for you.
I know how it works.
Put you in a bathroom in his wheelchair and we're just going to see how you like all the store ways.
I've had the issue. That's, but I guess the one question I was going to ask Bruce was for materials, because we do salt the walkways, is I always worry about steel wearing when you're in those size frames? Where the, the salt chews the steel away, even if they're not used during the winter?
It can't be the doors.
Well, here, Justin, we replaced these doors on this town hall about, it's now 12 years ago. Those were the original doors on this town hall, original.
Yeah, but things were built a lot better then than they are now.
We put the same, we put the same gauge doors back on that we had. And these two doors have salt on them all the time.
Have they shown anywhere at all?
Nope, nope. We had them take a camera to the bottom of them and they were fine.
Yep. The, the doors are specified to be galvanized from the factory. And then they're primed and then we do pretty aggressive paint system.
That we swapped, I'm, I'm in Woodbury. We, we, we did our office. We swapped over to stainless. And we just walked away from the salt risk. That's why I was asking if steel is still the ideal solution.
Well, your office has a lot more money than St. Joe.
Well, and. One of the things we that we can do um would be to do FRP frames.
No.
It's basically, it's basically a hollow metal frame that's coated.
Yeah, and then that coating gets all dinged up and.
No, I want, I want to leave them to steel.
Okay.
But I'm still struggling with this. Because for elections, and if we get audited, they're gonna say that that's an impediment to someone in a wheelchair if they open out. I I think they have to keep in.
Okay.
Well, I like the idea that someone, you know, I don't like the idea that someone can kick them in, but the town of Hudson has had. Those doors for a long time on those bathroom facilities and have never had any damage done to them. To the bathrooms, yes, but not to the doors.
Okay, well, you know, and we can certainly push that out to eight feet.
Well, let's all think about that, we can do that next week if we want to, but I think right now I'm. Still staying to this.
Okay.
Anything else you want to talk to us about?
My only thing would be is then we have to take under consideration, is your exit door for this building in the right place?
Well, we. Terry and I have had lots of discussions regarding this and have consulted with other clerks on this. And they feel very strongly that this is a good plan. First of all, you're coming in the front door to vote, you're coming all the way around to the.
Three second, see what the path is.
And then that's where you go out.
And let's bring these other, if these clerks know so much, then they can come in and they can work here, so it's like.
All I get there, it's gonna work well. And it's by the bathroom, I like that.
And the challenge is if if I.
Cause I don't see any reason, to be honest, that those bathrooms have to be right on that corners or in that. How they're up they are, so. I just.
Where, so Lori, let me, let me ask, cause I'm trying to make sure I'm following along, where would the bathrooms move to?
Move them, move them to the southeast corner?
That's a long ways from the park.
It's only forty more feet by the time you get there. It's like, what's the principal use of the bathrooms?
I felt that the bathrooms should be near the parking lot.
I figured if this is your primaries, if you're gonna have a sidewalk and you're. Where the election people walk and for afraid the election commission and all these other people. I thought right from the get go where the bathrooms are from an election standpoint are, is not the right place. And the people, this is the exit area, not an entrance, so they're not gonna be lined up there waiting to vote.
No, but it gives them an opportunity to use the restroom as they're leaving also. And my intention with this town hall, when we laid this out. Is that the boxes on the south end is where these tables are gonna go for the board and we're gonna be facing north in this building. So to have the restrooms down at that end, to me, doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
Boxes are you even talking about?
The electrical boxes.
So the way, the way the floor boxes are laid out, the the three across.
What does that have to do with the bathrooms?
Because what I stated to you, that that's the way this is gonna be laid out, just looking that way. Having that bump in for the restrooms, to me, makes better sense at that south, north, northeast corner. Rather than up against us down here.
It's just a wall and it's.
I know.
Further away than that one. I don't know, I'm not, I don't, I'm beyond arguing about doors.
So let's move, let's move on, first, you've given us a new. Um.
Let's go on down Bruce's list. Back on track.
Yeah, where else you want to go with this?
Um. We might as well talk a little bit about the door hardware.
Well, let's talk about doors first.
Okay.
Let's do that. Cause I think everybody needs to understand, cause you have doors on here somewhere, right?
Yep, they're on A six oh one.
A six oh one. So it's, let's ta- let's start at the entrance, at the vestibule.
Yep, so the the front doors coming in. Um, as well as the pair doors going into the town hall space and the. The single door going from the vestibule into the lobby will be full glass aluminum doors.
Okay. So again, that's the two doors coming in, the one door going into the lobby and the two going into the town hall.
Correct.
They're all glass.
They're all.
All glass.
I like, I like that.
Yep.
Okay. So now, do you want to take?
So.
Do you want to go down the hallway next to the office?
Working on this plan, not what.
Yep, so I'm back on talking A O, A one oh one, cause it's easier to walk through the plan here, so.
Are you, did you ditch the side lights on the either side of the double doors coming in, or are they still there?
Still there. So still full glass.
Yeah.
Uh, visibility into the vestibule, the the vestibule is is pretty much all glass. Northeast and west walls, the the south wall is the only solid wall. When you're coming in the door. From the outside, there is a square post to the right. That will have a push plate. For power assist on one of the doors coming in. It will also have a card reader.
Where's that on the little square here?
The little rectangle that's just. Or i- it's a square, it's an eight inch square steel tube.
Oh, right out in the front.
Right out in front.
Yep, on that.
Yep.
Northeast corner.
Yeah, okay.
So that's gonna have a push plate to.
Yeah.
Do power assist for the, for the east door coming in. Um, will.
And the card readers yourself.
And and it'll also have a card reader to unlock the doors, uh so you can come in. Um, and basically then, um, there'll be a switch. Either on the door operator, once you come in. That'll, that unlocks it. So that, there'll be a button button there on the the operator for the power assist to turn it off.
Oh.
So when the door is locked, somebody can't stand there and push the button and burn out the motor.
Gotcha.
Can I, can I bring up a uh an old air, uh an old issue that was a discussion last? I don't know if it was two meetings ago or last meeting.
Sure.
Where we, we didn't go for the uh overhang with the arches that we could have mounted this push plate on because of the. Sprinkler system. Wasn't that the issue, was that overhang on the exterior front door? We were gonna do like an act, and we didn't do it because we thought we had to do fire suppression sprinkler system on it.
And we are doing it.
Now, it sounds like that's out.
Take a look at, okay, take a look at sheet A three oh two, the section one.
A three oh two, section one, okay, gotcha.
So as you come out the the pair doors, um, there is a soffit at ten feet. And that sticks out four feet from the face of the wall.
Gotcha.
So that the entire vestibule. Entrance is protected out four feet and then the. Overhang that follows the pitch of the roof extends out another two feet.
So when you look at A two oh two, you can actually see it here, right?
Yes, yep, and that and that shows on the elevations. A two oh one and A two oh two, the side, looking at the uh west and east side elevations shows. The roof extending out and covering the uh front entrance.
Okay.
And the plan will be that we'll have two soffit mounted lights. Basically centered above the the jam on either side of the pair doors to light up the entry. So it'll be two lights recessed into the soffit at ten feet. Be six feet apart to light up the entrance coming in.
Can I go back for a push button?
Yep.
When I go to um Deerfield Nursing Home in New Richmond, which is. Hundreds of units. I have twenty four seven access in there, just I push the button, go in. The power button, and then inside the vestibule area, secure. There's a little box and I have a tab and I tap it and I'm in the building and can go wherever that little tap thing. Authorizes me to go.
Yep.
Will ours be something along that line?
Um.
Cause they must hand out, I don't know how many of those little tabs to people, you know. So I don't know how you program or how those work, but.
Yep, yep, and it. For that type of facility where it's manned twenty four seven, that's okay.
Alright.
To to basically not have the exterior.
Secure.
Be be the secure.
Secure, but.
You know, so you come into the vestibule, the the concern here would be that if. If I moved the security inside the vestibule. Because there's somebody not here all the time, somebody could be in the vestibule, you'd never see them, and they could. They could be doing all kinds of damage.
I I would imagine that'd be possible. There too, cause they had somebody trying to get me to let them in with my key code and it's like.
Mm hmm.
Right, but so ours, when they lock down, it locks it down and someone just can't keep pushing that trying to get in.
Correct, right.
Yeah.
Yep, so so the ex- exterior doors will be secure unless you've got a fob or a card. That will gain, give you access to get in through the exterior door.
Okay, good.
So, you know, whoever, you know, and I and I'm assuming, you know. All the town staff and the supervisors would all have. To get in.
Yeah.
You know, so you'd be able to come in. Pretty much anytime you need to, um, and then, uh. Will need to, will need to determine, do we want to provide power assist on one of the doors coming into the town hall space?
And that's, you'll have to, you'll probably start that at someplace in a smaller area than maybe here. I don't know.
So, I just want to bring up something before we get, I know we're on doors.
Yes.
We'll, we'll stay there, I'll talk about windows later, so keep going, so now we're gonna go down the hallway.
Okay, so you get into the lobby. So the the door from the vestibule to the lobby is just basically gonna be push pull with a closer.
And a lock.
Um.
That's gotta have a lock on it.
You want to be able to lock the.
One oh one dash two, one oh one dash two has to have a lock.
Okay, cause my.
I don't care if it's, it, yeah, it's gotta have a lock.
But not one oh one three? Right across the hallway, your double doors going.
Yeah, they're gonna have locks too.
Pair doors, those will actually be card access.
We're going left first.
What, but one oh one two is glass door again.
Is is full glass door coming into the lobby.
Yeah.
Um.
It has to have a lock.
Okay.
And then one oh four dash one. That's the hallway door and that's gonna be.
That will be hard access.
Hard access and steel with just a little side light window.
Correct, yep, a- and. The wall, the south wall of the vestibule and lobby. Going over to the office and then the wall at the open office. From the south wall of the lobby up to the exterior wall is gonna have the seven sixteenths inch. Bullet resistant panels for a level three protection.
Yeah.
From being shot at.
Okay.
Okay.
On the exterior walls of those two, that.
Just the interior wall, the interior wall between the lobby and the office. The lobby and the storage and the lobby and the hallway. Um, and the vestibule and the storage, all of those, all of those walls are gonna be level three protection. So somebody can't come in and and.
Shoot it all up.
Be shooting through. Um.
Okay.
That, the door into the hallway will have card access. Um, and there will be a push button at the front desk. The front counter, so if somebody's coming in and you're gonna meet with them, you can push the button. They can come through the door and and meet you at the door coming into the office.
Is one oh three dash one glass or steel?
Uh, one oh.
Is it a?
Where are you?
Which door are you at?
Coming into the office, uh the door one oh three dash one is hollow metal and we talked. They don't want any glass in that door. So it's just flush.
Across the hall at one oh seven dash two, that's solid metal?
Right, yep, flush flush all metal for all the doors going into storage one oh seven. The door into the conference room will be hollow metal with a narrow. Vision light, so it's like a, like.
Like it's out there.
That door over there's, that's a narrow vision light. Okay.
Back to the office.
So I'm sorry, we, we want the conference room one oh eight dash one to be a solid door?
One coming in the conference room will have a a narrow vision light.
Like the. Yes.
It'll be steel, but it'll have. Glass.
So that when you're going in there, if someone's in there, you're not banging them in the head as you're walking in, you have that narrow do-. Just like the door here on the town hall, the west.
He's asking why we're doing steel there rather than wood.
Wood, oh, okay.
Yeah, why would you, why would you spend the money, it's a conference room, it's not gonna have a lock on it, it's just a. Just a conference room, just make it a wood door with a window in the top of it.
How do you feel about that?
That's fine.
Now, she said fine.
Okay.
And I would say make as many of them as you can, the same, and the lock part, but I was gonna say if you're gonna do metal with those. Um, narrow. Vision lights, I'd be putting those in several of them if that's. I, you repeat them rather than having all these different styles and swings and.
So we're going into the office and then the one going into the vault has to be steel because of fire protection.
Right. One oh six dash one is a ninety minute door and a frame.
The one into her office will have a lock on it, but it will be wood.
Right.
And the one oh three two going outside will be what?
The, that will be a flush hollow metal, no glass. And there's no exterior hardware.
So you can't try to.
So once, once you leave.
Once you leave, you're gone.
And it, and it, and that's the same thing as the door going out the east wall from the town hall space.
Yep.
Is that's an exit only, there's no exterior hardware.
And it, this exit only is this one right here, just a flush steel?
Yep.
And this is a flush steel?
Yep.
You're gonna go hollow or you're gonna put insulated? You're gonna do the.
They're gonna be insulated.
Yeah, all, all of the exterior hollow metal doors are insulated, all urethane core.
When you say hollow, you're just telling us there's no windows or anything in them, right?
Well, the hollow metal means it's, it's just a skin, the door is, it's not solid.
Like the one in our vault.
Right, so the, the rated, the rated doors are still. Can called hollow metal, but they're filled with.
Different.
Fire retardant material.
So then, on the kitchen, those are wood doors that slide into the wall.
Right, pocket doors.
Then what do you have on the mechanical room?
Mechanical room is hu- flush, no glass, hollow metal and hollow metal frame.
That helps with fire suppression too, doesn't it?
Yep, that'll be a.
Okay.
A forty five minute door.
Then the two going in the restrooms.
The two going in the bathrooms will also be hollow metal. Um, with closers and those will be push pull with closers.
No locks.
No locks. Um, so it'll be a pull on the inside, a push on from the hallway to come through.
You're not gonna just do the Walmart thing where you just roar in there and there's no doors?
Uh, no.
Then one eleven dash one, that one will have, that will be still with a lock.
Yep, that'll be hollow metal door, hollow metal frame. Um.
Any windows?
With lever handle, no flush, no glass. Um. And that will be lockable.
Yes. Cause IT is gonna be lockable too, right?
Um.
Cause we gotta have locks on that door so no one goes in there and.
Right.
Caught this problems.
Right, so the, that would be, the question for the IT is, do you want to make it lockable? So you can unlock it and be doing stuff in there, or do you want it to be a store room function? Where you always have to have a key to go in the door every time.
Oh, yeah, which is a nuisance.
So you, usually what you see is that people use it as like a badge and then. If people have to be moving in and out, what they'll just do is they'll prop it open.
Right. And we can certainly make, we can certainly make the IT door card access too.
I know, that's a lot of money to do that, I don't know that we're at that stage.
Okay.
Oh, there, it's a lot cheaper now than it used to be, card access is now, I think it's.
Couple grand?
No, not anymore.
But by the time you get.
It depends on the lock unit you're using, I suppose.
Yeah, bu- by the time you get done with the uh electric lock and and all the hardware upgrades, uh it's about two grand. To make a door card access ready.
So then the doors on stor- on the storage room, you have one off the hallway and the two off the main. So then the doors on stor- on the storage room, you have one off the hallway and the two off the main. Hall room, those are gonna be lockables also. And steel. Cuz we don't want people trying to break in those places.
Correct, and 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 I'll probably do. An armor plate. On the town hall side on both doors. That's the, the the kick plate is twelve inches high, the armor plate is twenty four inches high for pushing through so you're not. Beating up the door.
So on your door finishes. You showed a door here with a half, half window in it, we are not using that anywhere, are we? Six oh one. See right here, this one here you showed, you have a drawing, I didn't go up there, I just saw the drawing.
Yeah, I don't have that, I'm not using that anyplace.
I wanna make sure you got, got rid of it. Alright, anything else on doors for him?
And the doors going into the two outside bathrooms, those will be flush, no glass, hollow metal doors, hollow metal frames. Um, and those will have electric locks that will be tied to a time clock.
That we can program.
That you can program for whatever you want for park hours. Um, and they will also have a privacy lock set. Uh, that's. Top connected to the lever handle, so when the bathroom is unlocked. It's basically, it basically ends up being a push pull with a closer. So there's a privacy lock set that's got a thumb turn on the inside. It'll have an indicator on the outside that says it's either occupied or open. And it'll be connected within the door to the lever handle. So that when you go in, you turn the thumb turn to lock the door. When you leave, you just have to push down on the lever. And it goes out and you can't, it, you can't lock the door as you're walking home.
They have those in every restroom in Regent's Hospital. Every single one is that way. Okay, anything else on doors for him? Moving on to windows. You showed the windows all on the plan, I just have one teeny tiny question. I was surprised to see this east facing window on the vestibule. Have we always had that there? I missed that. Do we need it?
It's entirely up to you.
What page are you on?
So we're looking at the, looking at the floor plan again.
Right here, it's on the side of the vestibule. For balance in the area, it's kinda nice.
Well, that's true, I just didn't know.
You know, for the balance.
We had talked about this. Several meetings ago about having this have as much.
I just wanna go back and revisit it.
No, if. It isn't critical. Um, for the visibility, cuz the majority of the visibility is, is gonna be coming from the north side. Um, and you know.
Well, if you're gonna use that for a walkway. For your, coming out of your election and or roaming around sidewalk there, you would want.
It's kinda nice, yeah, I agree. So then this window that's next to the exit door on the bathroom side, that's an eight footer.
Correct.
What would happen if we made that six?
Where's, which window are you looking?
Over on the east wall.
Oh, this one right, right beside the door?
Right beside.
And I was, when I looked at it, I, my thought was, why have a window there at all?
Well, we thought it would be nice to have that light in that room because it's from the east.
I would say no, cuz you've got all your big windows and it gives you one big unobstructed wall, if you want a little light for it.
Hmm, I see, I like windows. I'm gonna go against, I'm gonna go against both of you and say, keep the eight footer. Cuz to me, we should be soaking in as much of the light as we can.
We, we're gonna get very little light in the east window when we're in, well, in the town hall area, you're not gonna have people in there.
And one of the things that we, we can do just as an option. Is eliminate this window. And do the higher. Windows above the voting stations.
Yep, and have them match the other.
Up above.
Well, that's an idea. I like that.
This gives you more wall space than. You can actually add more voting stations.
Yeah, exactly. Let's do that, let's put a couple uppers in there.
And you don't, you don't need to have a security camera to see who's, if somebody comes through and smashes your one window out.
Well, you still get a security camera on that side because of the restrooms.
Either way, I say the.
Okay, let's do that.
Bruce had one quick question, uh, I apologize, I tried to put it in chat. Doors one one six dash one and one one seven dash one, did you say those are hollow steel doors?
Yeah, that, that's basically, it hollow metal means the exterior skins are metals, they've got interior stiffeners. All of these exterior.
Don't they have to be insulated?
They are.
They are.
Okay, so they're like a foam cord door.
Right, so they, they've got a, they'll have a polyurethane core. That gives you about an R of fourteen or fifteen on the door. But, you know. Industry jargon is a hollow metal door, whether it's insulated or not insulated. Interior, exterior, we call them all hollow.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it was.
You bet.
Playing on the same door.
Okay, anything else on windows and doors?
Um, one oh nine dash one. Do we want that inward swinging or can it be outward swinging?
One oh nine dash one on IT room, it's a, you tell me what you think.
If you'd ren- if you'd rather have it swinging out. We can make it swing out.
I would rather have it swing out. Because it's just gonna be. If one of us are in that, if someone's in there and someone else. Pushes that door open and you've got, you're on your hands and knees on a rack or something, you're gonna hit somebody, it's just easier to have it swing out.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And I guess the, the other, the question then would be. Would it make sense to not put a closer on that door? And reverse the swing? So that it swings up against the wall, it swings in the opposite direction, so I. I flip it so it's swinging to the north. And it can actually swing up against the wall.
The kitchen wall or the other one?
Against the uh, storage room wall.
Why can't it swing against kitchen, is there not enough room there?
Well, yeah, yeah, cuz I, you know, because of the pocket door.
It's less, you've got too much junk in one area, you're trying to.
Swinging out now and swings up, it's actually gonna block.
That's what I was asking, that's fine.
Yeah, if, if he swings it the other way, he's got a whole wall, but he doesn't have any hardware.
All of this wall to swing the door up against it, it gets.
That works.
Stand open. Does that seem okay, Justin?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Great.
Anything else on this? Alright. Um, is there anything else to this plan set that we need to pay attention to with you?
Um, I don't, we can take a look at the uh, exterior elevations and I apologize, I forgot to send. Some cut sheets for the light fixtures.
That's okay.
Um, but on A two oh one. At the front entrance. Above where I'm showing the, the signed Town of Saint Joseph. I'm actually proposing a light fixture that has an arm that sticks out about eighteen inches from the wall. And then it has a, another arm that's eighteen inches wide. And it has two light fixtures that will shine back at the wall to light up the sign.
Oh, okay, that sounds cool. And there'll be some ambient light that comes from that too.
And 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 so it, it'll be coming down and then in addition, we'll have the two recessed lights in the soffit to light up the entrance.
So what are the light?
And I'll send the cut sheet. So you can see what.
Alright.
Are they like, cool looking dangly lights or are they?
Um, no, they're. So it, it's basically.
I get the eighteen, I'm on that.
Very, very small pieces, so the, the tubes are basically about one inch diameter. That are coming, so you, you've got the wall plate that's probably about a four and a half inch diameter. On the wall, and then you've got a tube that's coming out that's about uh, one inch round. And then you've got a tube that's going in the other, in the parallel or perpendicular, that also is about one inch. And then it's got just a short stub that comes down and these lights are only about three by five.
Kinda like a, a track light hung out there with two little, little, there we go. That's not light.
Yep, yeah, it's not, it's not huge and and it's black and it kinda disappears. And then on the uh, west elevation. I'm proposing a. General light that will be tied to the photocell that's up at.
By the peak?
Fourteen feet. Centered on the wall. And then there's another light right above the door, that's the emergency light. So in the event that power goes out, you have to have, provide illumination and and. This light fixture is actually tied to the exits light inside the door. So when the power goes out, the exit light goes into emergency power and it turns this light on. That's the only time that that light will ever be on.
Is our fourteen foot light downward facing or is it like? Parking light like these?
No, but it's, it's down, yep, so it, it basically is broadcasting at about a forty five degree angle. On the wall coming down. And then on the, on the north elevation, what we're also proposing. Is to do, uh, again, some soffit mounted lights. That will be centered above this window. Above this window, above this window and above this one.
Perfect.
The north side of the.
Because for elections, we'll need that sidewalk li- lit.
And what about the one right below it then?
So here, this is the, the west side, so basically this is exit only. And so we're, we're providing one fixture here. Illumination just from dusk to dawn.
Same as the east.
Same as east side, yep, so then on the east side. We're. Currently just proposing to provide two lights that are above the bathrooms. And these will be on dusk to dawn. For illumination, these will also basically light up this whole sidewalk for during elections.
So dusk to dawn does not count during elections then, because we're in the dark for a November election. My god, it's been.
And these can be overridden. You know, if you've got a really gloomy day.
We can turn them on.
You can turn them on.
Um, and then that also has one up in the peak too?
I don't, I'm not currently, I don't currently have one, but I could add. General illumination on the east side. I'll do that.
Do we have one over that exterior door?
So I've got emergency light above the extreme.
Alright.
And then on the, on the south wall. And I've got one up close to the peak here where it's. Projecting out, this portion is out four feet. So this is illuminating here and then what I'm planning on is one soffit light here. And two soffit lights here. Just to illuminate, so we basically have the whole perimeter of the building illuminated to brand.
So the peak one again is thirteen footer?
Yep, so this one is up at fourteen.
Talking about, talking about lighting, so now you brought us a new plan showing two rows of parking, is there gonna be lighting for that?
Yes, so the, the, the new uh, site plan that doesn't have a sheet number on it. Um, w- we, we reduced. The boulevard strip to only being four feet wide. On the south side of the existing parking lot. So it'll be the sheet right in front of A one oh one.
I was gonna say, is that the only one we have is the big ones?
So we, we reduced the, the boulevard strip to only being four feet wide. And that could be rock mulch. Or it could be concrete, you know, or whatever, but basically the reason that we did that is because I wanna get parking lot. Lights at the east end and at the west end of that strip. And I want them to be protected and not right in the pavement.
Those parking lights will be like church lights over there, that kinda parking light type thing.
Yep, it'll be a twenty five foot pole with, with two heads. That shine down. Um, and then, uh. It's not currently shown on here, but I'm talking with Mike Fitzpatrick, electrical engineer, is. We're thinking we should be providing another pole light right here. That's, that's illuminating the sidewalk and the parking here, just to make sure that we're not. Dark. And then doing the same thing over here on the west end. Right at the intersection where this, this sidewalk comes from the building and ties into the sidewalk at the parking lot is we'll have. Lights there, so we, we're basically got all four corners of the new parking illuminated.
Teresa, do we have, same for electric here or XL?
Same for electric.
So I think that they can get involved in our parking lights, parking.
Parking lot, but right now this is what we're at.
So, Justin, he's just adding lights to illuminate a double row of parking, not a single.
Sounds good.
Anything else you have for today here on this plan set?
I don't think so, everything, you know, the, the current plan for the restrooms as shown on sheet A four oh one. Will be ceramic tile on the walls up to six and a half feet. Um, on what I consider the wet walls. Are where the sinks are, where the toilets are, where the urinal is, um.
Why wouldn't we go the other foot and a half rather than switch and screw, or are you gonna do those fiberglass panels? Rather than screw, are we talking about the inside bathroom or the outside bathroom again? Inside, inside, okay. Rather than screw around with a foot and a half of sheetrock above.
I can't.
I say tile to the ceiling.
Okay.
Not little tiles.
I'm currently showing twelve by twelve.
Or one by twos.
Bigger is better, but.
Bigger is better, less ground.
Less cleaning.
So, yeah, and then, and I'm showing twelve by twelve, we can. We can get to talking about what size.
Yeah, because we had talked about having um, the flooring and tile built, bit out separately, so we have to talk about that next week. Okay, so the other thing I have on here that I forgot to ask you about is these gutters. What kinda gutter system are we gonna be using?
Five inch bo- open box is nice.
Yeah, right. I don't wanna have open box, I don't wanna have to clean them.
Well, there's the kind of a fun, fun story about.
Leaf guard?
Right.
There's a funny story budget. Here, I'm, maybe Bruce knows more about this, probably does. That's a whole bunch of roof area and there's. Certain brands of keep the leaves out type of things over a. Higher pitch, when all that watershed is coming down, those gutters can't take the water on enough and it goes over them. So, and I, ask me how I, I know that.
Well, I know that too, I have, I have a lot of roof on my house, I know that.
And I was gonna say, the other thing is. To be honest, there's gonna be so much water it coming off that roof and running through those gutters. There isn't a lot of, any junk that's gonna blow in is from quite a ways away.
Okay, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I don't, you know.
And there's, they, those, they're nice, those nice big five inch box.
Yeah, it's gonna have to be five inch for sure.
Right, yeah.
The one that, that just recently ripped off all their gutters and recent, by recently, it's been probably pushing ten years, eight, ten years now. Was the old bank in North Hudson, that was one of the things when they sold, that bank was sold and the fire, the firework people that. They were pulling off all those old gutters and that's what they put on is five inch open box.
Okay.
Yep, and and that's what we detailed because we typically do uh, four by four. So we need at least five inches.
We're all on the same track for that.
Sounds good. Okay, so, um, we did get a plan from Mike Alama on the kitchen, we are putting the refrigerator in the corner, the sink. Towards the middle and then it's gonna have an open counter and there was no, no, um. Um, cabinets below it until you get to the next corner, there'll be a base cabinet and then I. kind of a utility cabinet there, so that'll be all set up.
And I've got that shown on A four oh one.
A four oh one, good, thank you.
Elevation thirteen.
Yep, so that's all set up there.
Lower right corner there. So we've got, so working from left to right, we've got a twenty-four inch wide pantry on the left side. And then we've got a twenty-four inch wide base cabinet and wall cabinets above it. And then you've got seven and a half feet of just counter for people to be able to sit at. And then you've got eight and a half feet of base cabinets with the sink in it. And then you've got thirty-nine inch space for putting a refrigerator in on the right side closest to the town hall side.
Is there really any value to having an itty bitty little one over the sink?
It looks weird without it, does it?
Yeah.
Yeah, like unless you, you know And I, you know.
I'm just thinking from just for the cabinet and stuff.
That thing is full, that one, because we use it with, it's got all our garbage bags in it.
Oh, that's important.
So the elevation, the elevations were showing the cabinet above the sink at twelve inches like the cabinet above
Yeah.
Refrigerator.
Yeah, same thing. Yep.
The one above the sink could probably be eighteen.
I don't know, it's fine if it's that way, I just thought it, at least you can put stuff in it and looks better, it looks weird when it's not there.
Right, yeah, unless you, unless you have a window. We'd be looking at all of that lovely
The question.
Yes?
What do we got the depth on for that fridge?
It's the fridge that we have here, it's taken and he measured it.
Oh, you're gonna make
They have one already over there that So they're putting theirs in here and we're taking ours with us.
Fair enough. Next time you're in the town hall, Justin, you can measure your fridge, you'll know all about it, it'll look about the same as this one.
Well, what I did was I I got burned because I put a new fridge in our kitchen and, you know, back, back when the kitchen was built, fridges were not quite as monstrously deep as they are now, so that's why I was asking, you know, just because it accommodates today, if the fridge eats it tomorrow or before we finish the building and we order a new one, are we gonna have a
Oh, I see what he's saying.
It sticks out issue.
And or a height issue.
Yeah, we, yeah. Is what got me, it wasn't a height issue, it was the depth of the fridge, because the new ones run deeper than the old ones do.
The nice thing about this is up against the wall, so this is a good thing.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
Well, it pushed it out further, so I I was just asking what we, what we factored in so we can account for tomorrow.
Yep.
Yep.
We are, we are
We can move on.
Accounted for to deal with a deeper refrigerator, in fact, what I'm showing is a twenty-eight uh and being a couple of inches out, and I think this one is probably twenty-seven, um but will be okay.
Yep. So um the plan for the town offices was revised by SOS, she and I went over there and talked to him a little bit more about it. You have a quote in your um drive regarding that furniture and also um more tables, because we need some more tables for elections and also the um fire department asked me to get a quote on tables for them, so I did all at the same time.
That, my question when I saw that was is you're gonna pull out and bill that to the fire department and not in
Right, but they wanted a quote, so I
I'm fine with that, I'm just talking about the billing money part of it.
Yep. So right now, that's where that's at. So that gives you an idea about where SOS is at. He's gonna finalize his quote for us here in the next two months, because he's still waiting for a quote on five drawer used vertical files, he's got fours right now, but no fives, and when he gets that, then he will send it to us and we'll have to give him a deposit. We're looking for five drawer verticals for the
Like old fashioned?
Vertical files, you bet. That's what we want for this.
Are you, and you, you were okay with used ones?
They're like brand new, she went and saw the ones we got at the town of Hudson and you wouldn't know they were used.
God, I could have gotten your some for like free.
The, these are like brand new there.
These were
SOS brought them in and set them all and leveled them all and
How many, do you know how many you need?
Nineteen.
Oh, god, we could have gotten them all for like Nick a song and they were like brand new.
Well, anyway, he's
We can find it again.
He's looking for really good ones for us and we got what's the brand name and he got them for the town of Hudson and he's looking for us right now.
Well, what's wrong with your, were your used ones that are in your thing now coming on?
We're taking um half of those with us.
Okay.
We're also taking the laterals with us that are in the office, but not the five drawer, we're selling those if the fire department doesn't want them. These two laterals here are pretty beat up and we're probably gonna sell those too after we empty them. This one I'll have to get moved because that belongs to the BLRD. Um, that's only laterals we have, so he's ordering us more laterals. Anyway, that takes care of that part, Bruce, anything else that you can think on your end?
Nope, I don't think so.
So you're looking for us next week to get us on approval to go to bid here? Because do you want your timeline so that you can just inform these two of it?
Correct.
Your timeline on bid?
Timeline is currently is to uh be ready to issue for bids. I do, I'm hoping to have everybody ready to issue for bids the end of the first week of March.
End of the first week of March.
Right.
What does that mean when you say you you want them ready to issue for bids on the end last week of March?
No.
So that means that everybody has their drawings done, we've done our internal review, um and they're ready to upload to Quest CDN for contractors.
The week of, give me enough, give me a week.
So it's the March fourth is the, is a
So you're You think we're gonna have this all put together and you're gonna they're going, they're gonna be online available to bid on the week of March fourth?
Yep, the end of the week, March fourth.
Okay. Um, any other questions for Bruce, Justin, that you know of?
Nope, I'm good.
Um, we have a couple of things that I just wanted to throw out there. Um, we have a septic system that needs to get installed and a well that needs to get installed. And um, we've gotten, um, I'm getting Mike Alama to give us a build out on the pole booths in the kitchen. And then flooring, we have Sunnylink, we have ASI, which I still have to talk, I've sent stuff to him, but I haven't heard back. And then, of course, the furniture for SOS. All of those things we can bid out or do RFP on separate from this bid. I'm saying that to all of you because we also know that any general contractor is gonna up his bid to match what he has to go out for, for a separate subcontractor. How are you feeling about this, Bruce, is us doing some of this ourselves, such as the septic, the well?
Is this kind of what I also had on the list?
Well, this is based on this estimate number, I, you should have it on your place.
Okay.
So um, how are you feeling about that?
Which is
I don't, I don't have any problem at all with with doing the septic system separate, doing the well separate.
Okay.
This segues what I'm, the list that I made because I was trying to figure out, we kept jumping around on discussions. And that was exactly what it was, is who's gonna be in charge of all of this and going right down your line was excavating the well, the pout, the electric, gas, fiber generator, finished landscape, blacktop, if we needed anything for the parking lot, I was got a different thing on that. All our permits from Dolan count, go through our county approval, our DNR approval.
We don't need county or or DNR approval.
Um, we've got, we're gonna, we have to be seventy-five foot from your wetland back here on that back property line, on that south property line. And we have to be, what's the setback from County Road V, hundred and fifty?
No, not here.
In front of the building?
No, not here.
Tell me what it is.
I believe the setback off of this is only fifty feet. County changed their rules.
So part of it's fifty and part of it's a hundred and fifty?
Yeah.
Um, either way, the, we ought to be sure that we don't get in hot water over that.
Yeah, Bruce can check on that.
Yep.
Well, or somebody.
Yeah.
With the Wisconsin DNR, do we have to give ourselves any variances, any waivers, do we have to obtain some from anybody else?
And as far
Are we gonna do our own interior office furniture, audio, video?
So audio, video will go through ASI because they're taking all of our stuff.
Okay, I get the ASI and Sunnylink booped up. What do we call Sunnylink?
Sunnylink is technology, ASI is AV.
Got it.
So ASI has already said that they will move all of our equipment over.
No, that's fine, Teresa, I just wanna know what the name is and where
And so I've already talked to them and they will, they've talked to Bruce as to what they need and what they want. Sunnylink sent me an email tonight, Bruce, so you should have everything you need from him on this project.
Okay.
Um, and he's doing all of the
Yep.
So I'm gonna go back to all we are, well, and the pout, those, and all the permits that go with that, electric, gas, are we, somebody
So the ge- the general contractor has to get the permits.
Right.
If we're doing it ourselves, then we'll get the permits.
Right, so
How do we know whether we're doing it or the general would do it and what, why would we do one or the other and why wouldn't that decision be made now?
I would make the decision next week that we will do our own septic and our own well to save money.
Right.
You're gonna make that decision?
I said the, I'm bringing it to the board next week.
Okay.
I didn't say I was aboard next week, we'll make that decision.
And I think That makes sense to do that, to
Yeah.
Directly, cuz you You don't need to pay a contractor
Right.
Their markup to do what you can hire a well driller to do.
And we can do an RFP on it.
And we just need to know where it's gonna go.
Right.
Right.
And we'll, we'll
And he'll tell us.
We'll get that determined.
Cuz that was my concern is, you know, where are all these things gonna be laid out?
He's gonna tell us.
Cause I want our, I think that our
And
Site plan should look just like we would require anyone else to be put bringing forth on some commercial building.
Oh, absolutely, and and we will be showing that and and it'll basically be marked up that the the septic system and the drain field are going here. The well is going here, that's a separate contract. Our, our contract will be getting our Yeah, I've got one.
So, um
Our, our contract will be getting power. I printed one out. Our contract
Did we?
Power from the building to the well. And our, our contract from the building will be um we'll have to work this out is do we stub the waistline out four feet or five feet from the building and then the septic
The things that I, that I wanna see the plan on where that's gonna It looks like we, can we go straight our property line for this ten acre parcel can go straight out right up to County Road V, is that correct? Even though it's a little nativey looking?
It's gonna be up to him, I'm not gonna answer.
What do you mean it's up to him?
He's planning, he's planning where it's gonna go.
Right, our current plan is the drain field's gonna go on the south side of the building.
Yeah.
It'll be just north of the, north of the wetland delineation, but the
We'd be running the discharge over there.
That part we need to, we still need to work out, um, we're working with our guys that designed the system. They're, they're at a big conference this week, so, um, but we'll figure that out and and based on the the latest information that Doug has done and the
Yep.
Yep, and and the wetland has been delineated. Um, I think Kelly will probably be giving Doug a call tomorrow to request all of his data that he did when he was out here last.
Flagged, I know that.
Yep, everything's flagged out there, so we can
Cause I was just surprised the delineation was closer to this north line than what I thought I So when you have, take the delineation and you start putting seventy-five feet and that would be counting your overhangs that we have to have.
No, it just goes up to, it doesn't.
Overhangs don't count.
It counts the
It goes, goes off the pudding?
Yes.
Next question, did we figure out if we need a, if we can get a generator on this thing? On this building?
I think I have
We talked about that and remember I asked if you wanted to check on that?
Right. And we will, we are, we are planning on providing a generator in it or setting up the building for a generator. And again, that would, another item that you could certainly
RFP out.
Yourself is bid out a generator on your own and we'll provide the size generator that you need.
Does our generator need a pad while they're pouring concrete?
Yeah, he'll do that.
Yep, so and we'll work out where, where we should locate the generator so it's accessible to be serviced. Um, similarly, we'll work out where the septic tank needs to be, that it can also be accessed um, to be serviced and and for periodic pumping, um, so that, that, that's all part of our
And as a part of the cleanup and the overall plan our septic system, if it's located on this area right out here there's no value anymore to the outhouses and what's up thereafter this year.
No, I expected that we're gonna tear them down.
And what do we just, yeah, okay, we just pull out all the old junk and fill in the hole and call it a day?
Call it a day.
I'm just gonna tell you, you've had a pretty good night here tonight, Teresa, why don't you leave it alone?
So, what, oh, go ahead, Justin, I'll let you speak first, sorry.
Sorry, I was just gonna ask, the other thing I I really still haven't been clear on was at one point there was a discussion for water for a fire truck or water, something on the front of the building for the fire department.
That was for fire suppression.
When we were talking that we needed fire protection system, it's a fire department connection.
Yeah.
Valve.
Um, okay.
Can connect to, now that we don't need to do fire protection, we don't need to worry about it.
Okay, perfect, that's what I wanted to make sure, so we're not thinking of
Tim Whiteside, Tim Whiteside said that he would contact Northwest about boring that line over, cuz what he wants to do is make the town hall, the server side, and then hook this one back to that. So he's gonna give him all that information on that.
Right.
That
So
I, I had already prepped that, so, cuz you would ask me to do that at the last meeting.
No, no, you didn't, you got it.
Yep, and all, all of the rest of the stuff on the, the list here, uh, working with the uh St. Roy Electric working with the gas company, uh, working with Northwest on the fiber, that's all part of the building project.
Oh, it is.
That's all.
Yes.
General contractor will be responsible for coordinating all of that stuff and it will be on our drawings.
Yeah, and I put it down because there, we beat them to death and we spend a lot of time talking about stuff over and over.
Right, so, and then the other thing is, is that when it comes to a building permit like we did for the shed and we did for this addition we do not pay for our own building permit, we don't write a check to ourselves. How we do it with Todd Dolan is we ask the contractor to get a building permit from him and he in turn charges us for whatever time he spends here overseeing the project, we don't pay ourselves.
Okay, good, and therefore, therefore their impact fees would not attain to, to our building.
We don't pay ourselves.
All right, um.
We don't pay ourselves and you cannot collect impact fees on this building.
Really, Terry didn't wanna do all the ins and outs?
Yeah, right. It's very clear in state statute.
One other oddball question that would be
And the, the only fee that the town will pay is submitting the plans to the state.
Yep.
Yep.
For review.
I don't know what the DNR is gonna ask for and I don't, in the same
Do we know what the
We need a stormwater plan?
He can check on that.
Um, I can check on that, I don't
I'm gonna say
I don't I don't think so because we're not, we're, I don't think we're even gonna
Right, what about
I was just gonna ask about the T, the turnaround time on the state's approval.
Um, typically, typically, we will submit the plans to the state at the same time that we issue the plans for bidding.
Yep.
Um, and at least in Wisconsin, Minnesota, I can't say this, at least in Wisconsin, on all the projects that we've done recently they have gotten back to us within three weeks With their review comments.
Well, that's.
And so we've been, we, we've been able to, uh, address anything prior to contract award. Um. And, you know. We'll be talking, we'll, I will be talking with Todd to walk through the plans, uh, prior to. Issuing them for bid to make sure that if he sees anything, we've addressed it. Um, before we send it out to the state, so. Um, I trust Todd knows what he's doing, um, and, uh. We've got a good working relationship and we can sit down and walk through the plans and make sure that. He doesn't see any red flags, um, that the state's gonna be complaining about.
I'm just used to doing roads where all our little eyes are dotted and.
Yeah, the only thing I was, I was trying to be curious about was, you know, if there's some. My only fear was like they come back with some dramatic change that we have a change request and. Blows the budget way out of where we wanted it to be.
Right, yep.
Well, I think. That's why I'm asking if there's any risk, you know?
Bruce does this often enough. I think he's pretty well versed on this. And furthermore, when the bids come in, you don't have to take any of them. You're not required.
Oh, I know. Remember you and I get to sit there a few times and read, read out loud to ourselves.
I know, I know. Okay, anything else for Bruce tonight? Cause next week we'll just finalize HVAC. You'll come, will this set of plans change just a little?
Yeah, I'll probably have.
A few odds and ends.
Little more information. I'll have some more details, um. And, uh, I'll get the, uh, the door swings.
Yep.
Changed.
Ready for bed.
Um. And, uh, revise the windows on the east wall. Um. Tweak the elevations. Um. And I think, you know, if, if you all want to think a little bit more about the sidewalk. On the east side and the, the two.
Door swings.
Door toilets of having those doors swinging out.
We can decide, let's leave that for next week, next week.
They're gonna be less susceptible to vandalism.
And their free space inside from all moving around.
So I'm just gonna put that on as something we'll decide next week.
Right.
So, um, one request is when, when you have the doors selected, Bruce, could you? Send me which doors, like which door styles are going where? Uh, one of the things I wanna look at is the HEFAB slash badge entry, cause I'm. I was looking at a new solution and I, I wasn't seeing more than four or five hundred dollars a door. Uh, to make them, uh, security access accessible.
Information on the door locks.
You know, the door locks and the door types, right? So I'm just trying to see, see the styles. I don't want this to be a room. I don't want it to be a building where we've got this nice light coming in from all sides, but once you enter a specific. You know, you leave basically a third of three feet away from the wall, you're in a cave. That's all I'm worried about. So I just was hoping to see like which doors are going where, which door styles are going to which rooms.
Okay, and, and.
That would be super helpful, just visually for me.
Tell him.
And I think on sheet A six oh one.
Uh huh.
Which is the, has the door and frame schedule.
Uh huh.
And it has the, uh, door types shown. So the full glass, the FG are the full glass aluminum doors.
Okay.
The N is the narrow vertical light in the door.
Okay.
And the F is flush, no glass.
Okay. So do we have any interior doors, it like interior in the office section that are set to flush outside of the vault? And the IT room?
Um, well. Currently, the door into Terry's office is flush because she's got a side light right next to it. No glass in the door going into Terry's office.
So, uh, I'll ask Terry, do you, do you want it so that no one can see if you're in that room or not? Or do you want someone to be able, like if you're in a conference call, someone could look and you could give them like a little handshake, like don't walk into my office right now? Cause usually, usually what we see is people have like the little window where people can kinda be like. Hey, do you have a minute or please don't come in here?
Not so. She wants a little bit bigger window next to the door.
Yeah. What about, do you want a full view? Door going in your office and no side light beside it?
Well, then it's hard for her to see into the office, office.
Oh, she have a whole window. Roll door would be like, be like a French door.
If I have a window, bigger window, I don't need the side light. Well, yeah, so you want a window in the middle of the wall? Yeah. Okay, I think so.
Okay, just make the entire wall glass.
Okay.
Wait, so you want a bigger window?
Mm-hmm. The side light would be okay if it's in the middle. And a doorway, no window.
No side light, it's just a regular door and a regular window.
And no glass in the door.
Think so.
And no glass in the door.
So I'll do it.
No glass in the door for sure.
I said.
I think I should do the side light and then can I do a little window too?
I wouldn't do double. I double the side light, but you think about that.
Okay.
You, you do whatever you want, Terry, cause you're the one who has to sit in the office every day, not the rest of us.
Because.
Okay.
Yeah, think about that.
Yeah, I get it, yeah.
Right now, I'm showing eighteen inches of glass.
Which is what Vicki has.
On the side of the door?
Yep.
On the outside of the doors, next to it.
Oh, that's pretty big then, cause it just looks small in this picture.
Right, so.
It's a, it's a foot and a half.
Yeah.
Foot and a half.
Foot and a half.
Okay, that's fine then. That's fine. It just, I thought it was small, gonna be like a small.
Oh, you're thinking this?
Yes, I don't want this. I'd rather have this.
Okay, then she's okay.
So that's wide enough. If you wanted to, you can actually add mini blinds.
Mm-hmm.
There.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so if you're gonna have a meeting, close blinds, everybody knows the blinds are closed.
Don't come in. Don't bother me. Actually like that, yeah.
And, and then you can open them up and when you're done with your meeting and, you know, and that gives you privacy.
Perfect. Okay, yeah, if it's that, that's good.
Okay.
Okay, anything else for Bruce?
I got a joke for Bruce. But nothing. I was gonna say, Bruce, you don't wanna offer Terry those, um, electrolysis glass where you can. Put the voltage through and it shades the glass. It frosts it. Then she can hit the switch and it unfrosts it.
Yep.
Yeah.
That, that stuff is really cool.
That's right.
I would like that.
Can you talk about that?
Yeah, on my mood? Come near it. So you have everything you need from us except to decide the bathroom, restroom, outdoor restroom door thing.
Yep.
And sidewalk, if we decide to make them go out.
Right.
Because I have to look at the ADA compliance on that.
Right.
Um, because if it's all a five foot, then we're gonna have to make the sidewalks wider.
Right.
And then the second thing is all the HVAC will get decided.
Correct, yep.
So you'll bring that plan into us so that we can finalize this on Thursday of next week.
Right, so that.
So that you're ready to go to bid then. And then once we finalize and you can let contractors know that you're gonna be coming forth with this.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Anything else, Justin?
Nope, this is everything from me.
Lee, I saw you on. Is there anything you wanted to say?
Not at all. This is really exciting meeting.
Anything else from you? You turn your, you still have your mic on. Is there anything else from you?
No.
Okay.
Did you understand when I was trying to figure out when you, by looking at my paperwork, what my questions were?
But I think hopefully he's answered a lot of that for you tonight.
There's some that, that given me some direction. I do question whether.